Um, audio. Oh, no, she's. Sometimes I manage.
Yeah, we had it up on the screen, but it disappeared.
Okay, sometimes Zoom will manage.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Senator.
How are you?
Too bad.
Good, how are you?
Old, tired. One of the above. Hi, Gary.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody.
Under Senator.
Section of the notebook.
Thank you.
Do you want them placed somewhere else?
No, right there is fine.
Okay.
That way I don't have anybody trying to come in and sit down.
John, we've got both chairs here. Do you have all of your team assembled?
Yeah, yes, we do.
Great, thank you.
Let's go. Now, how we want to do this, I know we have stuff from you all, so. Maybe it makes sense to run through. What you, you sent us a letter, you said that's, what did you send us? I'm trying to pull up my stuff together.
You have to send two letters, Senator.
Yep.
One was to answer the questions that we received from you all at the appropriation for full hearing. I sent a second letter just to clarify some of the more technical issues in our budget request. Because our, we tend to talk about the bigger issues which are important. And I often feel regret afterwards that we didn't at least cover with the subcommittee some technical issues, so I can just. Outline those technical issues if you'd like them to.
Yeah, I believe we're probably going to get to all of it, so let's, let's start there, that's fine.
Sure, so as outlined in my letter from March 12th. We have two, two technical issues of concern for the division. One of, the first one is, is really a technical issue. And, and you may recall, and members of the subcommittee may, may recall. A couple of years ago during the last biennium, well, the current biennium actually, first year of this biennium. We engaged in negotiations with our prosecutors' union only. To impact our starting salaries for prosecutors because we were getting. Only a handful of applicants for prosecutor vacancies. And this came up in testimony that Chief State Attorney Griffin gave. I believe it was to Judiciary Committee and then again the Appropriations Committee during the last biennium. And so in doing so, the fiscal impact of those negotiations resulted in. An annual $1.2 million hit to the budget. And we basically have been able to. Cover that $1.2 million within our existing budget because of how long it takes us to fill vacancies. But it is in fact, the 1.2 million is now a part of our current services budget. Through an oversight and misunderstanding during the, the, the fall budget process with OPM. We neglected to include that 1.2 million as a technical adjustment. For the, for the raises for the starting salaries for prosecutors. And assumed it was going to be in our current services budget. And then we found out that that was not the case. So we, we, we've put it into the technical adjustment. And so it would really be the ask of 1.2 million needs to be added to the current services budget for the division. To cover those starting salary increases. And it did have the, with the desired effect. Because now we're getting a much more robust number of applicants for prosecutor vacancies. Instead of five to 10, we're getting anywhere from 25 or up. Not as many as we got a few years back, but still a marked increase. So that was the first technical adjustment. And the second one is a little bit easier. And it's something that we all know and understand, not easier to solve, Senator, but easier to understand. And that is, and we only touched on it briefly in our, in our public hearing a few weeks ago. It's the holdback that's in the governor's recommended budget. And that's $3 million holdback to the PS line for the division. And, and that's going to have a significant impact. On the division because it's going to require, our estimate is about 25. Vacancies, we'll need to go unfilled to be able to hit the $3 million holdback. And I, I just want to point out. The hard part, which is, we're also asking, as you know, for resources for, for, for a couple of different areas. You know, the odd to get those resources if we were lucky enough and then not address a $2 million holdback because. We're basically. I guess, not even breaking even if, if we had a holdback, right?
Right, is this public defender services, that what we're looking at?
No, Chief State's Attorney.
State's Attorney.
State's Attorney, sorry.
Where, all right, thank you.
Okay. Questions from folks? Go ahead, Kathy, go ahead.
Thanks. So we have the, Kathy is fine, $3 million on the holdback. What are the, the digital needs that you have relative to review? Of the body cams and the dashboard cams and, and how much are you? How, how much product are you trying to review at any one time?
Sure, thank you for that question. So we are seeking 21 new positions to assist with the review of digital evidence. It's our position that is specifically related, or at least in large measure, related to Connecticut General Statute 2960. Which requires each police officer to use body worn camera while, while interacting with the public. And we're estimating approximately 165,000 hours of body worn camera digital evidence per year. Coming into the criminal justice system. When you look at the necessity of the division to look at that, I think it's fairly self evident. Body worn cameras are, are. Capturing all public interactions, but specifically they, they capture interactions related to the statements. Any statements from, from suspects, witnesses and victims. Any interviews with suspects, witnesses and victims. The body worn camera will capture the legality or identify perhaps illegality in search procedures. The validity of consent. And on and on, as I indicated in the hearing. I have particular concern about. Exculpatory evidence buried into these thousands of hours of, of video that we're required to look at. So that's on a digital evidence related to 2960.
What is the total dollar amount to fill 21 positions?
I believe it is 1.8 million, 1.85, I think it is, 1.84650.
And it's just, just so I'm clear on what the ask is, in, in these. Recorded. Interactions, you include custodial interactions too?
Generally, Senator, the police departments have their own. Not generally, all police departments pursuant to 5410 have custodial interrogation. Video capability. So generally, you're not, you're not duplicating it, you're not running your body camera and recording it in the interview room. And while it's not body worn camera, it's still required to be reviewed by us, right? When I broke this down just on body worn camera, that's the question.
Okay. All right, all right. Other questions?
So that's, it's, I'm sorry, go ahead, Representative Candelario.
No, Senator, go ahead, I'll go after you.
I, I, so we have a $3 million holdback, that's in, built into the governor's budget. And 1.85 for 21 new positions, what else is there now?
So we also had a request to help us comply with the Prosecutor Transparency Bill. Which is the data entry positions, we asked for. 19 data entry positions. And one, one position, so for a total of 20, to help us with. Standards and training around the division with regard to the data entry.
That is how much?
I'm sorry?
That is how much?
Um, 1 million, 1,184,702 dollars. For 19 data entry positions and one supervisor.
Thank you.
Just a question, so this is related to the requirements under the Prosecutory Transp- Trans- Transparency Act we passed?
Correct, sir.
And these are new people? Did we not fund it at all? Help me, I don't remember.
Right, John, so, no, we did not. What we've been doing is, is we had access to ARPA money. About the same time that the law took effect. ARPA money which ran out as of this past January 1st. To allow us to, to. To hire data entry operators, which then allowed us to get our numbers up from, in the beginning was only 16% of the data was being entered. To now it's above 88%, around 88% Division Y. And it was at that hearing in February where Chief State Attorney Griffin explained it's. It's not a real time system, we're always putting data in after the acts take place in the courtroom. So there's always a bit of a lag, so 88% with us is, is a pretty good number. It, it shows what we can do with the right staff.
If I could just jump in, Senators, you know, the, the prosecutorial data bill requires. This agency along with Judicial DOC. CGIS to cooperate in a gathering of 13 data points. Those data points then are, are transmitted through, to OPM and OPM puts out an annual report. Each year on prosecutorial data. When you look at 51286J, which is the collection of disaggregated case level data. Of the 13 points. Judicial is able to capture all but three points sort of automatically. The three points that they can't capture automatically are one. Contact between victims and prosecutorial officials, including data on cases involving victims, so victim contact. Two non judicial sanctions, which we refer in-house as prosecutorial diversion. And that means, you know, somebody comes in, say, when they're operating under suspension. If that person takes a conviction, perpetrating suspension, they lose their right to drive for another year. Our prosecutors have been trained and are quite willing to engage with those folks, try to get them restored. Sometimes that takes anywhere from a month to four months and in the interim. We will continue the case until the person's restored and then nally it. And then finally, the third point that we must capture is plea agreements. Specifically the prosecutor's last, last, last best offer. So when we talk about our data entry rates. We're talking about the fact that over the last two years, our data entry rates have dramatically increased on those three data points. So when I walked into this building in, in 2022. We were hovering about 20 something percent. Entering the data on those three points into our case management system, today we're at over 88%. I, I have to emphasize though. I say we're at 88%, we're capturing the data in every case. But because it's not a real time data entry system. Depending on when you look at it, it's going to, you, you know, those, those numbers could be 88%, then 95%, then 86% if you understand what I mean. Because we have to go back in after the case is called in court to enter such data. And it's the reliance on these data entry people that allows us to keep up and I, as I indicated in the, in the hearing. I'm particularly concerned by our, our ability. To meet this statutory obligation going forward without some help with data entry.
No, I, I just asked because the, the bill passed in 2019, which was before the pandemic, there were no ARPA funds, it had a fiscal note. We don't, or fiscal notes, so I, 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 that's why I was confused. About what you're saying about we didn't afford any money to this because there were no ARPA funds at that point. We would not have known that they existed.
And there was no case management system either. So when this bill passed in 2019 and went into effect in 2020. There was effectively no mechanism for DCJ to deliver these, these, this data. To OPM short of delivering a, a couple of truckloads of, of paper, which is obviously really not efficient. So our case management system went into effect in 2021. And then we took advantage. Of ARPA money during the pandemic to try to meet this mandate.
Okay, I'm sorry, Representative Candelario, you can go ahead.
Thank you, I just, just want to clarify a couple of things, so. That, the, the data entry position, what was that dollar amount one more time please? It was 1.1?
1, 1.184 million.
1.1.184 million, okay. That's for the data, the 21 positions to review evidence, that, the, the ask for that was 1.85, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then you have. Another ask that you forgot to submit of 1.2 million dollars for the starting salaries, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the last piece will be the holdbacks of $3 million. Correct, now let me ask you a question. On the holdback of $3 million, the other positions are not figured, figured in that holdback, correct? Those dollars you use just to, to hire staff attorneys, that's what that's for?
Right, existing staff, existing position count. The, the two, the two, two large asks of, of the data entry personnel and then the personnel. For reviewing body worn camera video, those would be essentially expansion option requests. Our position count would grow by the additional 42 positions, if my count is right. With additional funding to fund those positions.
Okay, thank you.
Ed, anyone else? Want to run us through the other stuff quickly? That you had the other stuff that wasn't the technical?
Oh, so the only other thing that we really haven't spoken about. Much at all, to be honest, is, is one position. And it's, it's a unique position because we do have a Medicaid fraud control unit, every state in the union has it. It's needed by federal law because states get Medicaid monies from the federal government. And that unit is, is in this building, is in the Chief State Attorney's Office. Highly specialized unit, the, the good news is that all states get reimbursed by the federal government for 75%. Of the cost of the salaries or other, you know, if there's equipment needs. We get reimbursed on the backend by the federal government, so really the state is only hit the bottom line by 25%. The federal government does an audit, annual audit of the Medicaid fraud unit. And in that audit, the most recent audit, they noted that the unit should have. What we call a, a forensic nurse investigator. It's, it's a position that is, is like an investigative position, but it's somebody that has. A nursing background, so they would have a better understanding of, of how to interpret and read medical records. And that was the recommendation made by the federal auditors. And so we put it into our request, it's just one position. You got the number? Yeah, and the, the number, I'm sorry, can you give me one minute? The number is. It's, it's 95,852 in fiscal year '26. And goes up. To 123,000 in the second year of the biennium.
All right. Anyone with any other questions? Any other questions?
The nurse, APRN, RN, LPN?
You know, I could get you, I can get you the answer to that, I don't have it at my fingertips. They did give us some leeway in terms of the type of physician, the, the level of nurse. I, I can, I'll, I'll send that to the, to subcommittee as soon as this afternoon.
Yeah, it's worth knowing.
Back.
Others? All right. If that's the case. Thank you very much.
All right, you guys, thank you.
Thank you, take care.
So where we at now?
Next stop is corrections I have, at three. I'm assuming they're not on the. On Zoom, yes, okay, so. Take a little. We'll wait for 10 minutes.
Hi, everybody, I don't know if you can see me. I have a whole bunch of people in the waiting room, so if you'd like, I can start admitting people.
That'll be great.
All right, thank you. Everyone from the waiting room has been admitted.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hey, Commissioner, how are you?
How you doing? Doing great.
I'm all right, I'm all right. So we have your. Stuff you said to us, you want to kind of walk through it, where do you want to start, you want to start with? Body cam, body, body cam? Yeah.
Absolutely. So first off, thank you for having us. The reason I got so many folks on the call from DOC is, I'm returning today from vacation, so. If I can't answer your question, I'll have a personnel. On site to answer your question, the body scanners, PA, PA 23-18. That we submitted. A call for 26 body scanners, each body scanner was 153,900. The total price for that bill was going to be $4 million. And that was submitted in February 2024. A body scanner proposal in 2025. That cough required for an additional 15 units. For the lobby areas. And that was a total of 2.3 million dollars. And then recently during the budget hearing. With restrictive housing unit with Senator Austin. We added 12 more body scanners for the restrictive housing units. And that comes up to 1.8 million dollars. So the total cost for all 53 body scanners will be 8.1 million dollars. And so that's the information of Senator Woodfield for the body scanners. That we submitted to, that would also eliminate. The main purpose of this is to eliminate the strip searches. We've estimated that with all these body scanners, we will eliminate in a year. 355,000 searches. 72,000 from contact visits. 17,000 from newcomer. 25,000 for transfer. 96,000 for outside clients workers. 10,000 for restrictive housing unit. 21,000 from scheduled medical trips and appointment. And then 3,600 from unscheduled medical trips. And then another 104,000 from court trips.
So can I just ask you a question about how this breaks down? So you have a, a little chart. That has facility, original PA 2318 lobbies and restrictive housing, you have the numbers associated. The column that's original PA 2318. So 2318 had you go, go look at. Installing the body cameras, what, what is that limited to since it doesn't include those lobbies and restrictive housing?
Okay, so the PA 23 was going to be for all visiting rooms and all intake units.
Okay, I couldn't remember how we broke that down. Okay, and so, okay, so now I get the, the total universe and. Okay, I'll, I'll just leave that there, all right. If we. And the reason we did that was because it was concerned about the family members having to be subjected to these, to searches as well, right? Family members, relatives, all. That was part of the conversation as well, right?
Yeah, for the lobby areas, if they don't pass our metal detector. We'll use a wand afterwards and then if they don't pass that, then there's a process that will. That a, a female officer will go into a private setting with the visitor. The visitor will remove the undergarmer and then come back out and then. The correctional officer will wand that individual and then clearly the individual come in. So that would definitely eliminate that for the, for the public.
And, and just before I ask if there are any questions, just from, from my own knowledge. Since, since we began having that particular conversation, have there been changes to your? Policy on strip searching at all?
Each, no, there has not been changes to the policy.
All right. Senator Austin?
So Commissioner, I want, I want to thank you for getting the numbers relative to the interactions that would. Be changed. Be changed in in between either the inmate population and staff or the. Public and staff, and this would also be a staff and staff. So incorporates everything, but I'm wondering, has there been any work done on? The number of. The possible number of. Decreasing. The in the negative interaction between staff and an inmate. Relative to like a restrictive housing. Issue or an intake issue. Relative to somebody new coming in or a return person. Has have you thought about that process either?
No, but I see those numbers are easily obtained because I can get the data unit to run a curry for me of incidents that are happening in the AP room. Incidents that's happened wherever the restrictive housing unit incidents were in the visiting rooms that happened in restricted. So that'll be easy for me. That information will be easy to get and I got people on the call taking notes. So I will forward you that that report sometime early next week.
Thank you, because I think that that might be telling also and further bolster the case for. Governor purchasing body scans. I think I think that that. Might eliminate some of the unnecessary contact between people. So I'd be interested in that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Question from others?
Couldn't figure out how to get my hand up. I'm fairly new to this conversation. I don't recall having it last time. Is this gonna in any way jeopardize the the safety of? Like, what are the body scanners? Are we sure they're gonna capture anything? Just this is new to me, so any information you can give me, I'd really appreciate.
Yes, we, I like Commissioner.
Yes, so. There was concern with radiation. For the staff and the and the offenders like that equipment. This program. So that everybody is gonna be flagged in that in that machine. So if I was to go into a facility, I would have to put my name in. The stabbing will put my name into it and then it keeps track of the level of radiation. So at some point, not every time you go through that machine. You're getting scanned and the population will not know that and the staff will not know that, but it will alert. The administration if there's any danger of any individual. Being exposed to too much radiation. Pregnant females are not recommended to go through that, so. Pregnant female that will have at your and that could be anywhere from twelve to twenty at any given time. Those individuals will have to, the knee arise, will have to go through a strip search.
Well, I think, well, that's good to know, the radiation part of it, but I I meant like, is there any?
She wants to know, Commissioner, is it danger, are you gonna catch everything that you would catch in a strip search in a body scan? Wants to know, that's, she, that's what she's asking.
I just, I want to know about the safety, like, you know, of, you know, the the guards and everything, the prisoners, all that, that part.
Yes, that of the body scanners will be a hundred percent better.
Can I just interrupt one section? Tammy, it's correctional officer, not guard. Correctional officer.
One more, alright, okay, go ahead.
Yes, a hundred percent better. It's the body scanner similar to what they use in the airports. So if an individual is having hiding anything inside their body, we will detect it in a strip search. I've done strip search for three years, a correctional officer in Hartford, and. You're not gonna find everything, so I am more confident that it will reduce. The contraband coming into the facility, both by the population and the staff at the lobbies area.
So tell me, just so you know, this was. A proposal that. Folks who've been concerned about overuse of body. Strip searches. And folks who are concerned about the folks who work in the system. Both kind of see as. Not everybody, but many of them kind of see as a good thing because of the level. Of transparency in terms of the body, right? The level of transparency there and that the. Reduced. Possibility of missing something. Without exposing people.
Will this be bonded then? I'm assuming we're not gonna put this into the regular functional budget. I would think we would probably look to bond. I don't know what the life is on a body scanning.
But that makes sense, but you know, you know how bonding is going right now, so, you know, we'll see. Others. And I can't see everybody, so if you. Have something, just say something, that's fine. Alright, that part is fine. Let's move on. What do we have after that?
Overtime? Overtime plan in progress.
So the overtime. For the facilities, we're monitoring it. Probably seven different areas, the correctional facilities. The district office. Secure division and pre unit. Parole and community services. Maintenance. Food service and HSU. The majority of our overtime is the custody. Happens at the custody with the correction officer at the facility. So we're gonna start utilizing shutdown posts to backfill partial accrue use days. We're gonna shut down specialized posts without backfilling. We're gonna resume sending staff on that are working overtime on second shift. Once the population is secure at ten o'clock. Then we're gonna send those people home. We're gonna use pool and shutdown posts for trips when appropriate. We're pulling shutdown on post by the collective bargaining agreement. I can pull an officer for four hours, so if the trip is gonna be a two or three hours, then we're gonna utilize that. Precision. We're gonna show appropriate staffing ratio for facility trips. We're gonna coordinate with CTU. We have a central transportation unit that does our trip to the courthouse. So we're gonna, and Yukon, so we're gonna utilize them to the max capacity. And put some of those trips to CTU and take them away from the facility on transportation. We're gonna coordinate with the health service to assess. Where is medical appropriate to move stabilized patient from a hospital area to Yukon? So sometimes we had inmates that go out to, say, San Francis. And they're gonna be in for emergency service and they get admitted. Once that individual is stable, move them to Yukon. In a medical wards like that, the staff members that are working there will be supervising. That individual and not having, not have to do it at the San Francis paying of officers overtime. We're gonna ensure that slot are balanced. Slots mean every shift has eight slots. If the slots are not balanced, then it's gonna cause overtime, so we're gonna ensure that happens. And that usually happens when the academy class graduates and we got new staff coming in. We're appropriately gonna use maintenance staff. To escort vendors. So right now, for example, we got a window project at at Osborne. And I have daily probably anywhere from ten to fifteen staff member in overtime for escort purposes. So we're gonna start using some maintenance staff to cover that too. And then we're reviewing, my chief of staff is reviewing all. All facility rosters twenty four hours in advance, and particularly the trips. That make sure that the facilities are following the policies that. That have been put in place by the committee to reduce the overtime. Any questions?
Commissioner, if you implement the these strategies. What are you projecting to be the savings in overtime?
Anywhere from two to five percent. And the reason two to five percent and why it's so low. The majority of my overtime is coming from precision vacancy, which is a correctional officer. That has to take a post, so regardless if I have that, Phil, not, I'm gonna have to hire somebody. And then the second reason is the workers' comp numbers. Right now, this morning, I had a hundred and sixty eight. Officers out on workers' comp for thirty days or longer. And another five hundred and sixty something that either went to. Were on comp for a day or a week or a medical appointment. So the bulk of the overtime is those is those positions.
Okay, thank you. Representative Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your presentation, Commissioner. A couple of questions about overtime. One of the things that I have concerns about is the fact that. We may be in a situation where we are understaffing the, you know, the prisons. And I'm wondering if that has an impact on your workers' compensation rates. If the lower the staffing that you have, the higher the workers' compensation insurance, if you have that information.
The majority of our workers' comp cases are individuals that are responding to an incident. There are some cases where the individual, very few cases where it's an individual trips and fall gets hurt. But our majority of our incidents are that the officers are going on workers' comp is when they're responding to an incident.
Absolutely, so my question is, when you have more people to assist with an incident. You have perhaps fewer injuries?
No, because a facility would not be in full operation if I don't got a full roster. Under the, under the protective act, if I don't have enough staff, I go to a modify. Activities modify mean that they don't go to, they don't go to their recreations in the housing unit. If I don't have enough staff. After a certain threshold, then the facility is locked down. For in order for me to have enough staff to respond to an emergency. So having more staff is not gonna, in my professional opinion, having more staff is not gonna reduce. Some of these incidents.
Have you looked at that with the insurance commissioner's office?
We meet with the insurance commissioner, we meet with a workers' comp fraud on a monthly basis. For every individual that's out on workers' comp. The warden at the facility and then my deputy commissioner here in central office. Meets monthly with those individuals, attract individuals to ensure that there's no individual that's misusing benefit.
But what about the individuals that are being denied coverage? Because the insurance industry wants to limit their access to healthcare.
I won't, I won't, I'm not sure how to answer that, Representative Johnson.
Okay, well, I just thought I, you know, try to balance the equities here. Anyway. The other question that I have is the situation that you have where you have prisoners sharing cells. Is that always the case?
Yes, so we have. Thirteen facilities. About a hundred and fifty one housing units. The majority of those housing units are double cell. Say if you go into. Like McDougal's, McDougal in the May building, there's ten housing units. There's forty eight cells in each unit. There's only one cell in each unit that's single cell. So the majority of of the cells are doubled up.
And have you ever looked to see whether or not you could give each person incarcerated their own cell?
If if you wanna, the only, the only way we can do that is by constructing new newer facilities that are all single cells.
I thought we actually had closed down some facilities.
Yep, we closed down three correctional facility, Northern. Which at the time we closed it down, had eighty one offenders at at Northern. We closed Bogowski that had four hundred and fifty four individuals. And then we closed Willisai Boski that had four hundred and fifty four individuals. Both Bogowski and Willisai Boski, those are dorm setting. Four dorms in each facility with a hundred and twenty individual in each dorm. And then since I, since I closed the last facility, my count. Has increased closer to twenty one hundred individuals are incarcerated. So when I closed that last facility. That was about a year and a half, about two years ago, Willisai Boski, my count has increased by over two thousand individuals.
Okay, so just to follow up on that, one question is, has ever, did anybody ever get murdered in the dorm?
I want to say the last one that I can think of was in nineteen ninety five at Carr Robinson. Where there was a disturbance and two individuals that were residing in dorm and were killed by the population.
Okay, and what about in terms of, I just, the reason I'm asking this is because you have a recent murder where someone's sharing a cell with another person. And so I'm just wondering, and I'll just cut to the quick. Do you decide what kind of, you know, person can share a dorm? And maybe sometimes the person just isn't suitable for sharing a dorm.
Yeah, there's a criteria that an individual, when he or she requests a single cell. That mental health is involved and then the custody folk and particularly warden is involved, but again. Our space for single cell is is very limited. It's very limited.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking of the safety of the of the people who have to share a cell. I can't imagine this tiny area with two people in it that already have distress. And I just, you know. Think that there should be some consideration to a new plan and how we do this. I don't think that what we're doing here is the correct thing for people, especially when they need probably to have some time. To figure out how they're going to, when they're gonna be discharged. How are they going to be able to function in the community? And they're not getting any any space, so. I just want to throw that out there and if I'd love to meet with you and talk some more about these things. Because I don't, I don't like the way we're doing things here in the state. But thank you so much for your work and I'd like to be able to change some of this and make sure that we. Try and make sure people are not having to share cells, especially because we know at least half of. The people have behavioral health problems and to have to share a cell too. It just doesn't seem to me to be the right way to go. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Representative Walker.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize for my camera, but my camera's not working, so. Just have to take this way. Good afternoon, Commissioner, great to see you again and thank you for. Getting, giving us a chance to talk. So I was looking at your, the, the, for the last, since twenty. Twenty twenty thirteen to now, the. Prison population versus the correctional office officer population. In thirteen, you had about seventeen thousand. Inmates that you were responsible for, but at the time you had thirty two. Hundred correctional officers. Now we're up to about ten thousand, or down to about ten thousand point. Six, is that about right what we are right now?
Eleven thousand ninety eight this morning.
Okay, eleven thousand ninety eight, so we're up to eleven thousand. So we're, but we, how many correctional officers do we have?
About forty one hundred.
Forty one hundred, okay. So are the, so you are increasing the number of correctional officers that you have in your facility now, in your program? Your agency, I should say.
The best way to explain that, Representative Walker. Since I've been a district administrator, which is eight years and. Probably in the last fifteen years, this department. Has never been to a hundred percent capacity. Like, right now, I got five hundred and forty one correction officers on vacancy. So I'm not sure what was the vacancy level in twenty thirteen when there was thirty two hundred correction officer. But I'm almost certain that they had probably five or six hundred vacancy at that.
It was about five hundred vacancies at that time, so I was looking at that. So, but I guess my question is. With the increase in numbers, do you think you're going to have a more of a need to increase more correctional officers? And can you explain why the numbers are going up, back up again since COVID? For the number of. Of people that you are responsible for in the correctional facilities?
Yes, so the reason, so working with OPM and they have forecasts like. For example, by, it's expected that by February of twenty twenty six. My population will be close to twelve thousand individuals incarcerated. The increase, I've seen a significant increase with the unsentenced population. At one point, I had probably. I want to say fifty two percent were sentenced and forty eight percent were unsentenced. That has shifted in the last couple of months where I think we're sixty percent are sentenced. And forty percent is unsentenced. In twenty thirteen. Well, let's not go twenty thirteen, I don't have the facts in front of me. But in like in twenty twenty before COVID. We were at seventy percent sentenced and thirty percent. Unsentenced in the county jails. So I am reaching a point, I am reaching a point in the county jails. With the unsentenced population that I'm trying to get creative to avoid from going into. Overflow units where 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 you put a bunk on the floor in these individuals. Now, we've been able for the last ten years to move away. Now, we've been able for the last ten years to move away from that. Um, as far as the correctional officers, uh, um, uh, that's the biggest drivers, that's the biggest driver for overtime. Uh, for me, those vacancies, so I'm constantly in conversation with OPM. Uh, for this calendar year, twenty twenty-five, from January to December. I already got my first class of a hundred that's been hired and approved to start the academy in April. And then I'm hoping that, uh, that we can get another two classes of a hundred each. To get us down to about two hundred and something vacancy. Cause I am preparing the agency for, uh, July's, July first, uh, um, twenty twenty-seven. When the seatback, uh, uh, contract is over and there's negotiation for, uh, uh, for the contract, the medical.
Okay, can I ask, um, is it also possibly that the number of facilities for, for, uh, transitioning? Um, inmates out of the prison has reduced? And you don't have enough facilities to, for especially end of sentence? Or people that need to have transition or who have gotten to the end of their sentence? But they cannot go out because we don't have the facilities in there, is that possible?
That is true to some extent, let me explain, uh, um, and I've been around for, uh, the majority of, uh, these, I think all of the closings since, uh, um. The last, since nineteen eighty-nine, uh, with the exception of Northern. That is the only level four, uh, level five maximum facility that we've closed. Every other facility that we closed has been either, uh, a, a level two, a pre-release, uh, uh. JB Gaze Webster or a level three infield. So, uh, um, the only level two pre-release facility I have right now is a half, half facility, which is, uh, the Seibolski building. Which houses up to five hundred and eighty, uh, uh, individual. So Carr Robinson, which is a medium security, um, their population, they house probably eleven hundred. Uh, probably forty percent of that population is a level two, uh, uh, individual. So we've had to use, uh, uh, Carr Robinson as a, um, as a medium facility. But then housing pre-release, uh, individuals. So it's not uncommon to, in a maximum facility, level four facility, to have individuals that reached their level, uh, level reduction. And their overall level was reduced to a three and medium, but I can't send them anywhere because we've closed all these medium facilities.
What about out community services, uh, community or agencies out there that we, that you have contracted with? To receive the, as they come out of facility? Has that number gone down for the number of slots and beds that you have contracted with out there in the community?
No, right now we got, uh, that number has not been reduced. We got about, uh, one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine beds out in the community. That are being utilized almost to, uh, a high ninety-five, ninety-six percent, uh, um, rate. And, uh, um, so that is not, and then we had about a hundred and sixteen males on the waiting list. To a halfway house and about nineteen females, uh, on the waiting list to a halfway house. And I, I'll remind the group that that waiting list before, probably five, six, seven years ago, was six hundred, seven hundred, and sometimes even eight hundred.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Rep. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I just want to start off, uh, by saying thank you, Commissioner, for, for joining us, it's good to see you and, uh, my name is. Delaney, I, uh, I'm from Stanford. Um, if my connection starts to, to go in and out at all, I'm just going to turn my camera off, I'm having some connectivity issues. Um, I have two sets of questions, uh, one revolving around the free messaging and second around the corrections enterprise. Uh, or, uh, correctional enterprise of Connecticut program. One of the things that wasn't lost on me from testimony was, you know, uh, in relation to the three point five million expected to be saved. By rolling back some of the free messaging program. Um, is that there were some few claims that the vendor that we operate with, with the program. There might be a possibility to negotiate better rates, could you expand a little bit on that process and, and where we are with that vendor?
Yes, so, uh, um, our contract for the tablets expire, I want to say April. I think it's April fifteen or April twenty, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five this year. At that point, we will be able to, uh, uh, negotiate, um, some rates. And I'mma let, uh, my director, uh, Michael Regan, who does the contract, uh, who's on the call. Give you the current rates that we're paying for the individuals, Director Regan?
Good afternoon, I don't know if my camera's on or not. The current contract, uh, runs out in, uh, in April, but we're going to extend that for another year. So that we have time to, uh, decide what the next step will be, whether to go out for RFP. Or to, uh, access a multi-state contract that will allow for it. Right now, uh, DAS, Department of Administrative Services, this is a Department of Administrative Services contract. Uh, would be leading, uh, negotiations with the company to, uh, to adjust rates. I don't know where that is, uh, in, in the queue at the moment, in terms of, of where they are in their conversations with the company. But as it stands right now, the rate would stay the same, um, throughout the life of that contract. So if we do, in fact, extend it, which we have to, because there isn't enough time to do an RFP at this point in time. Uh, we will have the same rate through, uh, through twenty twenty-six.
Roger that, thank you, and is, I guess what I, what I mean to get at directly is. Is there any possibility for better negotiations with any other vendors to try to get a similar service at a better rate? To try to get close to that three point five million and, and spend we're hoping to save?
Yes, well, um, on, it, it, right now that service is bundled within the entirety of the tablet contract. So to get a different messaging service in would most likely require a, an entirely different tablet platform. It's one of the, one of the services that are provided as packaged within that tablet as provided by the vendor. So we would have to go out for an entire tablet, in which what, what we're, which, what, what we would do an RFI for. Or an RFP for would be for a, a new tablet provider if that was something that we wanted to do. And then we would, we would have to change out the entire tablet program. Everything that is currently included with that program, with that tablet, would have to be replaced by a different tablet from a different provider. So it wouldn't just disrupt the, um, the, the inmate messaging, it would, would, would change over the entire program.
And Rep. Representative, uh, um, there's only, that I know of, there's only three companies nationwide that does this. We had GTL probably about, uh, uh, fifteen years ago and we got rhythm because of all the headaches. Uh, so if we do an RFP, there's just three companies and one company, uh, um, is, um, fairly new. Does not have the infrastructure to handle the volume that we're gonna, uh, we're gonna need. Um, and just to follow up, I, uh, uh, because I know Senator Winfield is on the call. Uh, I did have a conversation with, uh, um, with Secretary Beckham. And my desire to make sure that we find the funding for that three point five. And my concerns that, uh, uh, that I have, uh, if that goes away, uh, um, so, um. Was receptive to the, to the conversation, uh, um. Uh, you know, so I'm hoping that by the end of the budget that, that somehow we find the money. Okay, um, Rep. Delaney, you done?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Rep. Nucia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, so how old are the current tablets that we have?
Sorry, can you repeat that again?
How old are the current tablets that we have?
How old we been, um, I became a commissioner, so I want to say in twenty twenty, I want to say that I introduced tablets. And once in like twenty twenty-two, the tablets were introduced to the agency.
Probably a couple of years old and we're replacing them, I'm going to be honest with you, my iPad is probably about seven years old. If that, more than that.
We're, we're not necessarily talking about replacing them, the, there's a contract under which the, we don't own the tablets. The tablets are the, are, are the property of the vendor. The vendor provides those tablets, they upgrade those tablets as necessary, so if they come out with a new version of the tablet. They, you know, they recall the old ones and issue the new ones. So if we change the contracts, all of those tablets go. And then the new contractor, whoever that would be, would come in and provide their, their tablet under the same terms.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Was, was that it, Rep? Um, I just have a, a, a quick question, so I don't want to get too deep into it, but I know that you had the Falcon Group do a report. Are you using them for anything else, implementation of the report, that kind of stuff? Are there costs associated with that?
Yeah, there's a cost associated with that and we're in conversation with OPM. Uh, I definitely want to bring them back to, uh, uh, assist us with, uh, um. Uh, modernizing our restricted housing status, uh, uh, when it comes, not just the structure. But the programming piece, that the programming that's being provided is, uh, evidence-based in, in, in the program that exists. And then, um, I need to utilize them too. At some point I want to move away, uh, uh, from insular restraints and I won't talk too much about it because I'm in court with it. You know, so, um, yes, I need to secure the funds first with OPM and we're in constant conversation with OPM.
Okay, um. I, again, I like, I understand, is there? Is there, and maybe you don't have this now, maybe you can't get it, I understand either way. The numbers on that, uh, is it possible to have a sense of what the numbers might be at some point?
The numbers, um.
Continue, to continue to use them for implementation.
Okay, I'll get you the information.
Yeah, and then, uh, my annual question. Uh, we have put forward the true unit and the worth unit as units that really make a lot of sense, do a great job. And I think, you know, every year I ask, is there a plan to try to do a broader, i- i- if it's not the true unit? But a broader, uh, approach that approximates that throughout our prisons in some way?
The answer is yes, and I'm, I'm happy to, uh, uh, um, to update the group that we were in partnership with Amens. Amens is at a, um, University of California in UConn, we went to partnership and, uh, um, some of our staff went down to Norway. Um, uh, and two, uh, two separate occasions. Uh, we recently implemented an, an activity team. That's focused at Gardner in York, the deal with the most, uh, uh, troublesome individuals. Uh, uh, we just had our first, uh, uh, um, meeting with an individual that's, that is very difficult to, uh, um. To manage because of his mental health issues and just trying to break the barriers, the walls down so that, uh, um. He has an avenue to speak to our staff, our staff were, uh, uh, just like true and, uh, and worth. Uh, uh, they can play a card game, they can play dominoes, they can play basketball with the individual. Just to mind to keep the individual occupied, keep him busy so he doesn't resort to, uh, uh, acting out. And, uh, I'm using, if these, if these individuals are acting out, uh, uh, in the unit. Instead of sending a supervisor that does not have the training experience. That you, that group of individuals are the ones that respond and try to calm the situation. So the individual does not have to go to restrictive housing unit. And then the other one is, uh, um, Chicago beyond, uh, um, and again, it's a therapeutic, uh, uh, um. Environment that Oregon and Cheshire are participating. Um, and both facilities started doing town halls with the staff and the population. To talk about the concerns that are coming up at the facility.
Great, great, Commissioner, and I don't want to eat up too much time here because I know we're, we're time limited and I see Rep. Johnson has a, a question. Uh, I, I probably will reach out to you, uh, to have a more full.
Absolutely. Rep. Council.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you for that question because that's kind of where I'm leaning as well with, uh, people who are incarcerated. But I also, uh, forgot to ask the question about the halfway houses and the oversight that the Department of Corrections has. And I just wondered if, I know, I've seen your contracts, uh, with the nonprofits that do this, uh, online. I don't, I haven't seen them all, uh, but I wonder, uh, how you're doing the oversight there? And I wondered if you have a policy or how many people are assigned to that? Uh, because I'm sure you understand where I'm coming from. Uh, we have had that Nurse Grayson who was, uh, murdered in my district. And so it's fired a little bit of an interest in me to see what kind of oversight, uh, the department has over the parole. Uh, people and also, um, you know, uh, people who are, um, not necessarily dangerous. But on the other end of that halfway houses that have contracts, uh, with, uh, the Department of Corrections. Uh, that, uh, you know, for some reason the nonprofit isn't working as well as it should, has a financial problem. Just, what's the oversight like, what's your process? And you don't have to answer it now, this is just a question, I'd love to meet with you again and have a moment. And have you give me the stuff in writing so I can read it over before I waste your time? And so I, I, but I do have a, I do want to make sure I understand what's going on. Because I have a community that has numerous, numerous halfway homes, numerous group homes, uh, and numerous sober, sober houses. And I want to make sure I understand what's going on because I've talked to a number of, uh, DA, DMAs, I've talked to DSS. And, uh, there seems to be a lot of, you know, differences and ideas of what's actually occurring. So I really appreciate that time, thank you.
I'd be happy to have that conversation with you, Representative Johnson.
I really appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, madam.
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner, just a quick question. I just want to know, how's your relationship working with the reentry centers that are spread out throughout the state of Connecticut? And what's the process you currently utilize? Because I've been meeting with them and there has been some requests on their behalf. So I just want to understand a little bit what that interaction is and how do you work directly with them?
So they, they play a very vital role with the discharging, uh, uh, population. And particularly with the, uh, with the, with the homeless population or even individuals that are going out, uh, um. Um, so my reentry staff members, each facility has a reentry counselor. And within a hundred and sixty days, a hundred and twenty days, they start a discharge planning. And they'll make a referral out to, uh, of those five, uh, um, reentry, uh, um. Houses in Hartford, Bridgeport, New Haven, I believe Waterbury, and I'm not sure if it's Norwich or New London. Uh, um, and then, uh, we drop them out directly to, uh, um, those centers. So that they're met with the staff and, uh, uh, and, and meet their needs. I want to say Representative, uh, um, I think in twenty twenty-four, there was probably close to four hundred referrals. Uh, uh, um, that went to them and that's not includes individuals that probably will visit them. Once they have discharged and for whatever reason, a week or two weeks later, they end up at those reentry, uh, uh, centers. So they play a critical role for us, uh, uh, in the, in the community to assist us with an easy transition into the community.
Thank you, thank you for that answer, Representative Walker.
Uh, yes, thank you, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and, uh, Commissioner, I just have a couple of questions. On the messaging units, the contracts that we have for the messaging units. Does the state get a percentage of each call that, or, or should I say, does DOC get a, a percentage, um, payment? Of each call that is made or utilized through, through those programs?
Not from the calls or the, uh, text messages, no.
What do we get, where, where do we get, uh?
You know, and I have to get you the information, what's the percentage on the, um, items that they purchase? They're allowed to purchase movies on the tablets, they're allowed to purchase, uh, music on the tablets. They're allowed to, uh, purchase books so they could read on tablets. Um, they're allowed to purchase games on the tablets, uh, uh, so I have to give you, um. Look at the contract and get back to you, Representative Walker, exactly what the percentage is.
And when we, when we get those, those charges, what does the money go towards?
I'm using that money currently, I'm using that money, uh, uh, my, I've got a class that's graduating fifteen individuals from the Willis Seibolski. Uh, went into partnership with Joe Turner on the construction. So we got fifteen individuals that are near discharging and, um. Are, are going to be guaranteed, uh, uh, a job placement out in construction. And then I have two more class scheduled for the next two years, I got five classes scheduled with Joe Turner. Each group, uh, each, uh, individual is about ten thousand. So it costs us about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, that we utilize out of that account, uh, um, going back into the programming for the individuals.
Okay, and, and for the commissary, do you get a, a percentage out of the sales in commissary?
So there's an upcharge in the commissary and the upcharge in the commissary is to pay for our commissary staff members. Our commissary staff members are not paid by our budget. Uh, uh, um, the commissary staff and CEC staff are paid based on the, uh, um, the business that's generated.
Uh, okay, so that they're not, they're not getting paid for their regular job, they're only getting paid for the hours that they're working in the commissary, correct?
I'm talking about my correctional off, my correctional, um, my correctional, correctional, uh, commissary operators. There's about a hundred and fifty-one of them, um, they're not on my, they're not a line item in my budget. The markup is what pays for the salaries in commissary.
Okay, all right, so let me just make, and then I'll finish. So what you're saying is the people that you have operating the commissary, they're not paid as COs, they're only paid as commissary, uh, okay.
Correct, out of commissary budget.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, madam, um, any other questions? Thank you, madam. Um any other questions? See, none. I just want to be mindful that it's three thirty six and we had to schedule into three thirty and we have other people. Um and there's a lot in what you presented that we have to go through. So um if you can just do a quickly brief. Run through anything important and everything should be important in this document. I just want to know anything that you want to point out to us. Because I just want to be respectful of everybody's time.
Absolutely. I'll do another real quick. Uh so. In that document, the question is about the uh um U S D one teacher staffing. We have a hundred and fifty one. So I gave you the breakdown. How many are teachers? How many instructors? How many administrative staff? How many are non-certified clerical staff? And then I gave you, which is important to me, the uh special education uh uh um teachers. That we have uh because of D O J, uh um there's twenty six uh special education teachers throughout the thirteen correctional facilities. And then I broke you, I broke down um community and parole, community support services. Every halfway house and program is at twenty five programs that we have. And it's right there. And then the last thing was workers comp numbers. We. I got a hundred and sixty eight individuals that have been out of work for at least thirty days. And then I got another uh uh four hundred and eighty five individuals that. Either use one day, two days, a week, four hours and uh um so and that's the second largest driver in the uh uh in the overtime. And that is all I have for the committee.
All right. Well, thank you. Commissioner, members, any questions before I let the commissioner go? Seeing none, Commissioner Kiroth, oh, Representative Shill, I'll say your hand up.
All right, I do have one question. You've just mentioned that you have four hundred and eighty five workers that are out for a day, an hour, or a week for workman's comp. Is this something we can do anything about? Like, I don't know how you take an hour off for workman's comp. How does that work?
Well, if 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 you uh um individuals that um say we turn back on a light duty. And has a doctor's appointment, most likely a hundred percent of time is going to be doing normal working hours. And we're obligated by um their contract to give them up to four hours to go to that appointment uh for therapy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, any requests that you have that are not in your budget?
I just thank you for the hard work that this uh committee does. Uh uh it's very hard for the job that. That you do and I I understand this time of year uh is very difficult. Uh uh and my job is uh um. To do the best I can with whatever budget is uh presented in in front of me.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Commissioner and your staff. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have next up is Board of Pardons and after that is judicial.
Are they on?
Yes.
Yep.
I'll apologize. I'm in my car waiting to go into a doctor's appointment.
That's fine. All right, I just cannot find any. Looking at my. Yeah. Sorry. The true submit any. Any reports for this work session?
No.
Did not see anything. Okay.
Weren't asked to, no, thank you.
No, okay. Okay, um. Staff, I mean staff. Members, any questions for the department? Um any specific adds that you had initially or anything within your budget that was taken out that you are? Have a request for, um if you can just provide us some some insight into that, please.
Sure. Uh right now, we're in pretty good shape. We are requesting um some additional staff to. Kind of reduce some backlogs that we have, but we're we're working with what we have right now. Um we we do have some open part-time positions for board members. And if legislation changes and our role expands, we would need to fill more positions with uh parole staff and office assistants as well.
So um the talk to me a little bit about your caseload. How's that coming along? Do you have you 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 talked about that you have some staff that you need to fulfill, some positions that need to be filled. What's the impact on your caseload currently right now?
Uh right now, we have a a backlog in our pardons cases of about eight or nine hundred. We just can't keep up. We're getting a hundred and fifty to two hundred applications a month. And we're we've already added hearings to our calendar. So we're doing. Two pardon hearings a month when we were doing one a month. Prior to that, it was quarterly. Um parole, Joe, I don't know if you could speak to that a little bit better.
We don't have much of a backlog and on the parole side. We're in pretty good shape with the parole side.
Yeah, but we you know, we do have the the juvenile reconsideration cases, the twenty-three-one sixty-nine cases that were that we've added to our schedule. And if that legislation changes again, then then we'll have some more cases to deal with.
Okay, so uh in regards to the eight hundred, nine hundred um backlog that you currently have. So what's the wait time for someone that submits an app a pardon application for them to get a review and be before the Board of Pardon and Paroles? How long does that process take? If you could talk a little bit?
From start to end, meaning from the time we get your application through, e- even when we're done, it takes judicial. It it takes some time to clear all of the records. So um. I think that that alone is is a couple of months. So start to finish, it's about eight months right now.
Eight months. So that means this backlog for you to tackle this backlog and bring it down significantly. So we're talking about years?
At this rate?
At this rate?
Uh yeah, well, at our best shape, it was uh three months. Joe, how long ago was that, would you say?
Couple of years ago. It's been about three to four months.
Couple of years ago, yeah.
Years ago.
What would be the need for you to tackle and reduce this uh backlog significant? What would be the staffing need?
More board members to hear the cases, more parole officers to process the cases.
Hmm, but you currently said that you were okay, so.
Yeah.
Please elaborate on that.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to, we would have to maybe add another hearing. I don't know. It's a lot. Having having two pardon hearings a month. Um. That's a lot. It's it's a full day. We hear. About forty applicants in a hearing, but we do expedite it. In addition to that, there are administrative grants where we don't have to see people. Um. I think just given that the volume, we were getting so many more applications than we ever have before. Um and there's there's no way to predict um whether that will decrease, increase uh in the future. But the only way I can see is is adding more staff, but we're doing things at a steady rate right now.
Okay, so basically um. How you process the application, first come, first served? That's how you do it? Do you prioritize? Do you have a mechanism where you prioritize or no?
No, for right now, they're first come, first served.
First come, first served. Okay, um I hope my other questions for now. Representative Johnson.
Uh thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your work, uh Madam Chairperson. I uh have a couple of questions in terms of the diversity of the people that you have to oversee. Uh when you go through the parole uh changes and the pardon changes. And I just wondered um in terms of that, uh you have a number of people who are, say, incarcerated and then they want to be paroled. Uh my understanding what you're doing?
Yeah.
And about how many of those uh fit into that uh eight hundred to nine hundred uh people in the back?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. So. The the eight hundred, the backlog is for pardon applications, people who want their records erased.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the clarification. And so what about the uh parole applications?
For yeah, parole applications as one becomes eligible. Um at either fifty percent of their senses or eighty-five percent of their sentence and um.
Sorry, eighty-five percent of their sentences?
Right, fifty percent violent offenders, eighty-five percent for violent offenders.
Uh huh. And and so in terms of the the process, so that's just take the violent uh perfe- uh offenders. So when we're looking at the violent offenders, how are we uh making a decision about uh? What they should have when they are, say, now they're being paroled. We'll talk about parole first.
Sure. Uh uh so are you asking about their parole conditions when they're released?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we have risk assessment tools and uh we. They uh have mental health need for sending them for health evaluation and treatment. If they have substance abuse issues, then they'll go for substance abuse treatment. If it's a domestic violence offender, we send them for domestic violence programming, um things like that. So.
Not say say we'll just exclude people who are neither uh having a problem with uh substance abuse or uh. Personal family violence, but people who are violent in general, um but they don't pick on necessarily family members. This isolated, they're not as. But never. I'm sorry, please.
Sorry, but there's a delay here. Um we would send them for anger management classes or um alternatives to violence uh programming. There's there's different types of programming in the community for everybody, anybody that we we parole.
Uh understanding what the trigger mechanisms are. I mean, I guess what I'd like to see is what you what you have for policies that I could take a look at.
Policies surrounding conditions that we set?
Yeah.
I don't know that we have policy uh regarding conditions. I mean, you know, we have risk assessments that we use and.
That's a policy, right?
Yeah, I mean, it could be. Yeah.
That sounds like one to me. I don't know. So, yeah. So if I could see how you do your risk assesses, do you have something in writing that's a risk assessment?
Our risk, yeah, I mean, it's on the website, but certainly.
Okay, very good. Uh okay, you broke up again. I'm sorry.
We can send some, we can send something to you if you'd like to take a look at it.
Yes, I would like to see that. And then um and then in terms of your uh connection now, do you have? Now you're part, you're sending people out on parole, correct? My. Okay, and and do you oversee anything having to do with the um parole uh housing?
No, parole community services handles the supervision.
Okay.
C, Department of Correction.
So that's those uh those those are right there. So and what about uh people who are, say, still needing, they still have their sentence? But they are in a situation where they uh are going to have to maybe ask for. A little a bit of a reduction in how they're overseen, say, maybe going from.
Hello.
To um uh do they go to, I say, uh probation? Would they ask you for probation?
No, probation is is part of a sentence in court. That's a judicial function, so we we couldn't give someone probation. We could terminate their parole early if they're doing very well so that they could start their probation.
Right, that's that's the question. Uh can you terminate their parole and put them on probation?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have the policy for that as well?
Uh the early termination policy? Yes, we can send.
Could you also add that to the list of things that I'd love to see?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very, very much for your work and I look forward to uh seeing those policies. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Johnson. And as always, just send that to our administrator, military, to make sure we all get that those policies as well. I guess I had just any other member with questions before I ask one question that I have? Any other questions from our members? I've seen no hints. Um in regards to when you are going to grant a parole. Do you work, I'm assuming, and I want to know that process too. Um, do you work with the reentry centers at all or or corrections deal with that directly? Once you have authorized the parole, it is corrections that deal with the reentry centers? Or do you work with the uh the inmate in that process as well?
Yeah, we do not. When we grant parole, we we turn the key parole and community services.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. Any other questions from the members? Nope, see, and now, well, thank you so much for being with us today.
Thank you.
Have a nice day. And up next is judicial. So.
Good afternoon, Representative Candelario.
Judge Cruzuro, how are you? Nice to see you.
You as you as well, and I think all our folks are on or jumping on.
Perfect. Um you submitted for today. I see that you submitted. If we could go through the responses to the multiple questions that were asked by the members. And then um at the end, I want to make sure that we go through all your requests.
Okay, great. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll we'll start off right at the top and it was a question from uh Representative Walker and I'm going to turn it over to Gary Robert, our Executive Director of Court Support Services.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the question that we had during our initial uh testimony last month was if we had. Uh additional funds beyond what we're hoping to um to to um. To be appropriated to 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 meet the deficits that we have. But if we had additional funds beyond that, what are the programs that we would be looking to expand in both the juvenile and the adult? Um parts of the business that we do. And on the juvenile side, we talked about credible messengers. And uh that program we currently have in Hartford, New Haven, uh Bridgeport and Waterbury. And uh if um we we would really like to expand that to the other six core juvenile court locations that we have.
Can you just just briefly tell me a little bit, what is the credible messenger's program, if you don't mind?
Yeah, it's 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 a mentorship program where uh uh we make referrals of our our highest risk kids that we have under our supervision in those cities. And uh they get matched with a credible messenger who has lived experience, has been through the process, right? Um and uh they they work with the the they work with the child, the youth, they work with the family, they're available to them pretty much twenty-four seven. Uh you know, so if there's any crises going on, anything that's uh that they need to talk to their to their mentor about. Um they'll take them out to different community-based functions, out to dinner, just spend time uh with the youth and develop a positive relationship. And uh you know, you know, we've 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 gone out, we've done field meetings, rep Candelaria with 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 the credible messengers out in the four locations, uh the juvenile team. And I got to tell you, they're just uh they're 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 doing a really good job. The feedback we got, just the work they're doing with the families. Uh it's a really good program. And uh again, if we could expand that to other locations, I think it would be very beneficial. Our juvenile probation officers love the service that they're getting through this, so.
Excellent.
We said for that. The second thing is the uh reintegration mentors and family support specialists. So these are positions that. We we have it in our Hampden Secure Program, okay? So uh we do not have it in our Hartford and Bridgeport. Um residential centers where we also have region secure programs. So it's in those two locations, we would be looking to. Operationalize this service that again, we have in Hampden. That's very beneficial to the kids that are reentering back. To their communities. And again, much like credible messengers, it's like a mentorship program. They're working with the youth. Uh and the families to ensure a seamless transition back to their home, back to their schools if they're. Have an internship, if they have employment, so the you know, the the work that they're doing with the kids when they're reentering. Um and then the other things we put in is, you know, to fund the cost. Um uh that resulted from our most recent reprocurement of regions uh. Uh limited secure program for girls. So that's a program that we have uh for girls, uh the Journey House. And um we had to go out back out to bid because the contract cycle came to an end. And it came back um about a million and a half more to operate next year and in the out years than it did. Uh in our last contract cycle, so we included that. Um and then the fourth item on the juvenile side is something we've talked about with this body before in in previous years is just. You know, uh an increase in uh salaries for our vendors that are doing this work on the communities, working with the kids and the families. Uh you know, that are referred to us through the juvenile courts. On the on the adult side, there were two two areas that um you know, that uh we would recommend expansion. And the first one is this A B C program. I should have spelled it out. I apologize. Alternative behavior choices. And this is something that's pretty exciting here for us in the branch. Uh we developed it and it's uh. It's a program that's available to domestic violence um defendants. After they've used the Family Violence Education Program. So typically now, if you use the Family Violence Education Program, there's really no programming or services that you're getting on a subsequent arrest. So this is uh uh another program. So they're getting services, domestic violence-related services while they're in that. Stat that status, their case is pending. But again, they exhausted F V E P, so that's not available to them. And this is not a diversion program. That's not what it's meant to be. Um and we currently have pilots in Bridgeport, New Haven and New Britain, and it's working out very well there. Uh and we would certainly look to expand this to other locations if not. And we would certainly look to expand this to other locations, if not statewide, if there were available funding for that particular program. And then again, the, the salary increases for our vendors and our contracted providers on the adult side. I hope that was responsive to the question that was asked a month ago.
Yes, that responds to question. And if we can have, because it's always good for us to have a number attached to this. What would be the cost to expand it based on your, what, what you're, what you're not requesting, but what you would like if we had additional money? How much would that cost?
Okay, so
And that doesn't have to be now. You can get back to us. You don't have to do it now. But just think about it because you know, as we look at everything and this is brand that's very successful and we want to expand, we want to make sure we know what that dollar amount is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Thank you, Gary. So the next question was posed by Representative Nuccio. And she was asking how my judges are retiring in the next year. So currently with the 12 new judges who are just appointed, we are at 174. By the end of 2025, with retirements will be down to 169. And by the end of 2026, with those retirements, we could forecast being those judges who reach the age of 70, will lose another force will be down to 165 by the end of 2026. That does not account for judges who are eligible to retire before they reach the age of 75. Those pop up randomly. So that, these are just numbers that include those judges who reach the age of 70.
Thank you.
And the, the next question also posed by Representative Nuccio. I'm going to turn it over to Gary to follow up on the credible messenger with respect to what we have currently. So Gary, you want to take that one?
I will. Thank you, Judge. And Mr. Chair, this gets to one of your questions about the additional cost for a service. So this one was specific to credible messengers. So as I noted, the, we, we currently have it in the four locations. So to expand it to the other juvenile court locations, to have it in all the juvenile courts throughout the state would be an additional 3.3 million. And then if we wanted to expand it to the outlying towns in the bigger cities where we have it in Hartford, New Haven, Bridgeport and Waterbury, that would be another 2.2. So to get it statewide would be 3.3 million in all the juvenile court locations. And that is with services available for up to six months that we would serve. We would have, yeah, services are available for up to six months. Those 36 slots across the four locations. So six in each slot, 72 youth annually between the four. And that would expand it to, if we went statewide, 720 youth annually at a six-month basis. So 3.3 to annualize it statewide.
Annualized it. Perfect. Thank you.
And, and Gary, you want to take the next one that has to do with lapses? There was a question regarding our lap start juvenile counts over the past five years?
I will. And I believe that was Representative Nuccio as well, who asked that question. And you could see the, the lapses by year. And as we were talking about last month during our testimony, there's certainly certain reasons why. But you know, on the juvenile side, I'll give you an example. So in fiscal year 20, we were just starting to finalize the opening of our region secure program in Hampden after the transfer from DCF came through. So we had 4.5 million appropriated for once, for, for one secure program at the time. There was actually an appropriation for two. But we were working on this one and that one did not open within that fiscal year. And when July 1st came and it opened later in the fiscal year, so we, we, we realized 1.6 million that we didn't spend on that particular service. And we have that with many of the services that we contract for. And interestingly enough, or I don't know if it's interesting, but on the juvenile side, we really seem to modify and change services a little bit more than we do on the adult side, right? Between MST, F F T, all the acronyms for the in-home clinical based services that we provide, the different respite programs that we have. And if we fund a program in a fiscal year, again, and it's July 1 to June 30, and we don't start the program until October or November, we have almost a half a year of program operating costs that we don't spend that at the end, then, and that continues to accumulate on top of vacancy savings throughout the year. So there's different reasons built into the lapses, but that's certainly starting to certainly in 2024, we saw it go down substantially on a juvenile side. I'll just point out, if you look at the adult alternative incarceration line, that's the second one up from the bottom, you see a different story. You know, if you go back and you look at the lapses there, you know, 500,000 last year. And I think we also have to be, be thoughtful about the fact that, you know, we're talking about $130 million worth of programs and services and contracts that we have. So there's going to be lapses just by the way that we structure our business, it's going to happen. But if you look along the adult lines, they certainly were, were less. And you know, we, we had the issues we talked about last month during COVID with supply chain issues. We couldn't get in, for instance, we couldn't get vans for our transportation unit and juvenile. You know, our juvenile residential services, work that we do in the branch that takes kids to their, to their court dates around the state. And we just, we just couldn't get them because they weren't being produced and we had supply chain issues. And that's just one example. So there's, there's different reasons why, but that's certainly not the case. This past fiscal year or the fiscal year that we're in now, we actually had to make cuts on the juvenile side of about $4 million in order to balance our budget by the end of this fiscal year. And again, you know, what we were talking about last month, that between juvenile and adult in fiscal year 26 and 27, we're looking at substantial shortfalls to approximately about 26 million between the two of them. And that, that's going to be a, a big hurdle for us to, to get over if, if that's not addressed in some way, shape or form.
Gary, that's a perfect segue into the next question that was posed by Representative Gilchrist, Senator Winfield and you as well, Representative Candelario about you know, the impact on our programming with that 26 and a half million dollar cut, what that really means as far as the impact on our operations. Gary, you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Judge. Absolutely. So you can see in the response, the different areas of our operations that would be subject to cut. Some of these could be eliminated. So residential programs that we have, respite programs, you know, beds for kids, both on the pre-trial and post-adjudication side in, in you know, in, in our courts and, and in our juvenile residential network, clinical services, in-home clinical services. You know, you, you see the list of programs, the link programs across the board cuts. That's another way that we addressed deficits in the past where, you know, we, we, we impose a 5%, 7% across the board cut to all of our providers. And although it doesn't seem like it's significant at five or 7%, if you talk to our provider network, they will tell you that any cut is significant to them. And for some, it could be it may jeopardize their, their business structure and them actually doing business with us. And then, you know, on the adult side, which is the next page, it's, it's very similar in nature. So we would, and again, you know, everything here is on the table. So explore and evolve for domestic violence programming, transitional housing. We have approximately 150 transitional house beds that we fund. Our inpatient substance abuse treatment services with Demus, right? So we have a collaborative where we have about a mental health and substance abuse beds. And, you know, I, I, I know Commissioner Keros was just on and talking about overflow and, you know, how they handle the pre-trial part of their population. I can tell you that when we have to cut the residential beds or the transitional housing beds, that's going to directly affect the courts. The, these are people that every day, all day long, through the jail re-interview program and other mechanisms, we are modifying bonds and we're, we're placing people in residential programs, transitional houses from arraignment. Somebody who's, who's, you know, unstablely housed, who's homeless at the time of their arraignment. If they have nowhere to go, they may end up in the Department of Correction. We put them in a transitional house because it's, it's, it's an appropriate alternative, you know, to, to incarceration or detention. The, the, the Department of Correction will see, we'll, we'll see an increase in their pre-trial population for sure. If we have to cut or when we cut the, the residential treatment network or the transitional houses. And you know, it also with respect to the courts, on the post-conviction side of our business, we use 400 to 500 of these residential beds every year for probation referrals. So instead of moving forward on a technical violation of probation, we'll make a referral to a residential treatment program. We could put somebody in transitional house to see if we could get them back into compliance with their probation conditions. And absent that resource, we may have to go to a technical violation warrant and they're back in court. Now, all of those individuals won't be incarcerated. So many will be released on bond. That's, that's a certain. But there'll be a subset of those individuals that certainly could, you know, find themselves in a department of correction as well. So I think we have to be thoughtful about the impact that these cuts are going to have on our colleagues over at the Department of Correction and to the courts themselves.
And if I could just add, Representative Candelario, you know, we're talking about these sorts of resources that are available to individuals who find themselves in the criminal court. They're usually plagued by addiction or poverty, poverty or mental health issues. You know, the courts already see a lack of resources available to this population to keep them, you know, out of jail. These are nonviolent offenders. We already don't have enough resources. So this kind of cut into those sorts of options that are available to a judge after an assessment by bail is, is gonna, is gonna have really, you know, a, a huge impact on, on, on the courts and the way we have traditionally operate. We're already, yeah, really a disadvantage because there, there'll never be enough mental health beds, that's for sure. But this is going to cut into the ones we already have available for us. Same thing with respect to those people who are afflicted by addiction. It's a nonviolent crime. They're addicts. That's why they interface with the court system. There are programs out there available to them that they could be successful and we never see them again. Hopefully, that's always, always the dream and hope. These are going to be people who, you know, are going to be stuck in jail on a low bond. They just can't make. Or it could come to a point where a court's not going to keep that person who's, you know, on a nonviolent crime and drug addicted in on $10,000. It's going to let them out without treatment. They are just going to refend again and keep cycling back. So it's, it's hitting an area where we are already short of options for judges when they're reviewing these particular cases.
It is concerning just to see this. And I, I like that you listed what programs will be impacted with the cuts. I think that's important for us to review. Now, can you talk to me a little bit more about the, the deficit, the 26.5 million? Can you break that down for me just a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So that, you know, we find ourselves in this situation because of the increased cost of doing business with our providers. So the programs and services that we fund. And, you know, one of the examples I gave last month during testimony is our alternative in the community programs. That's our, that's our bedrock program here in the branch. We've had them for 30 plus years. Their former name was Alternatives to Incarceration, right? And we changed it to Alternative in the Community. But that's what it is. It's an alternative to incarceration. We do cognitive behavioral therapy there. We do basic needs. We do employment services. We do some, some, some really good work in these locations. Last year, it cost us about 18 million to fund the entire network throughout the state. And so we put it out to bid because our five-year bid cycle was up and we got the bids back and it's close to 22 million this year. So it's gone up 4 million to fund the entire network, right, across the state. And, and that's not the first time. Five years ago, we, we had an, an increase, you know, it wasn't, prior to that, it wasn't 18. It was maybe 15 and a half, right? So it keeps going up and there hasn't been an adjustment over the years in the light items. We've had adjustments in our appropriations for new services. For instance, you did give us credible messengers on the juvenile side three years ago. And thank you for that, by the way, because it's really good service. But to fund our existing services that we have. So, you know, our adult behavioral health, our, our more clinical programs that we have on the adult side, our linked programs on the juvenile side, MST, our multi-systemic therapy that, you know, the clinical teams that we have to do in-home services on the juvenile side. All more expensive now than they were 10, 12, 14 years ago. And through this process, we haven't adjusted for that increased cost of doing business. And that's where we find ourselves today with the deficits on both the adult. And it's pretty much equal in terms of, you know, the deficits in the adult and the juvenile side.
Correct. So who negotiates? Once you get the biz back and you see that it has increased, then you go, you go back and renegotiate and see if we can bring, bring it down somewhat? Because I think that everybody's feeling the pressure, right? You're the part in our state, so we have to spread, right? The love to everyone. How does, are those negotiations happening?
That's a great question. And they do happen. That's exactly what we do, what you just described, Representative Candelario. We, we go back, we get it back and we say, you know, do we really need to, you know, to have this person working this shift? Do we really need this person doing this particular program? So we look for any efficiency that we can find and we will. And we will trim some, but certainly not
Not all.
Not a lot, not all. Correct. That's it. But that, that's a really good question and we do do that.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much for that response.
Can I ask a quick question?
Of course, Representative.
Thank you very much. So you just mentioned a whole lot of programs and a whole lot of money for them. Do you have, like, what does it cost per person? How many individual people are you helping with these programs? Are any of these programs ones that we can get rid of or combined with something else? Because there's a whole lot that you mentioned. So I'd be really interested to know what the cost per person is.
So, you know, we were just talking about the alternative in the community programs, right? And I, I need to sharpen this number, but I did it because I thought that this question may be asked and, but I got to verify it with, with my people. I'm not a very good numbers person. I, I would say we're in the ballpark of about $4,000 per slot, okay? And I think annually, we have 4,000 to 5,000 go through just the AIC network. We do have a lot of programs, but they're all for different purposes and different level of care, right? So, you know, and, and we can certainly provide you with what we spend in each of these particular program areas. But I do know, so, you know, last year, calendar, maybe it was fiscal or calendar year 24, we were doing a judge's training, a new judge training. And I, I wanted to know how many individuals were referred just to CSSD by the courts, right? So for diversion programs, alcohol education, domestic violence education program, alternative in the communities, for all of our services, right? How many people did we touch? And did, did we interview and did we interact with? And it was 120,000 people. That's, that's not how many people get services within the course of a year, but that's how many come to come through our doors and the Court Support Services through adult probation, pre-trial services, family. And just to be clear here, you could be a domestic violence arraignment and you could end up on probation. So I count that twice because it's two units of work, but nonetheless, so we, you know, we provide services to thousands and thousands of people in our network. And some services are more expensive, like our residential treatment beds that we have through the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. And then there's a lower cost service, like the alternative in the community program. So it's certainly a range in terms of cost per slot or service.
Uh, you're
Yeah, I couldn't unmute, sorry. So are you reviewing these then to say, like, maybe we don't need all of them? Maybe we only need some of them, some of them that can be combined, you know, or, or is this just a, nope, we like all of them and we're
I, I, I don't know that it's, we like all of them. Well, we love all of them is the actual answer to that. But I think they are all necessary. I don't think that we could cut anywhere here where we would not feel it in the system. Because again, they all serve a particular purpose for a particular client that we have. And we're always looking for efficiencies where we may have duplication, where we may have redundancy. But the, certainly, all of the services, and I think Judge Bezuto just spoke to it. We actually don't have enough services for the people that come through. We have a waitlist for our residential program in DOC right now. You know, the fact of the matter is, we, when, when, when we were fully funded for our residential treatment network, we had 324 residential beds. And at the end of the Malloy administration, when there were significant cuts to all state agencies, including the branch, we had to cut 150. Then that's what got us down to the 184 that we have now. We have a waitlist in DOC for those residential treatment beds. The, the only service that we don't have a waitlist on where you can go in the day that you're referred is to our alternative in the community programs and, and receive services. Other than that, we have a waitlist across the board for all of our services.
Well, I don't, I don't want to be the, the wet blanket here, but you know, if you've looked at the state budget, it's, it's pretty
I, I understand. And in, in, you know, Commissioner Carros just said it and I, you, you people have a very hard job. Absolutely. 100%. I, I get it.
So to help us process and just following up on Rep Nuccio's question, line of questioning, is it possible to get a breakdown on these different is it possible to get a breakdown on these different programs of how many per per person cost? How many, how many clients are serviced through each program? And can you break it down from the the last three years? Or at least the last four years, so that we can have a better gauge when we're making our decisions? Because we're going to make some tough decisions. Let's be honest. It's not going to be simple, but we want to make sure what whatever decisions we make, that we get all the input we can from you and the information that you could provide us so that we can make a very conscious decision when we are doing our our budgets. So if you can provide that for us, that will be great.
We'll get that for you for sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next question was posed by Senator.
May I get a question in there?
There it is. Representative Walker.
I was being quiet. I was being quiet. And I and I thank you for for your answers and and everything. And I think the question really is, where do we want to put our money? Because if we have a choice, it would be better to put people in a community sent community programs. One, because it is getting them to a better transition into their community. Or we could put them in DOC and we can reopen the facilities and end up paying, I think it's it's 19,000 a year for somebody to be there. Does that help correct their behavior so that they don't repeat those? No. What it does is put somebody in there to come back out into our community to then go back to the same cycle again. The whole objective is to stop the cycle. And the only way we do that is with with programming that is focused on either sexual behaviors, addiction, a variety, lack of education, those things. And those things are cheaper whether people want to. Yes, we put the the amount up there now, 26. But that's because we put the whole amount up. But then if we take that same population that Gary Robert is going to show us and we multiply it by the cost of the incarceration, I guarantee you, you come out with a much better number. And that's something that we don't do. We can't just look at a number, just like when we see things like 100% of federal poverty. That masks the impact. It doesn't say how poor the people are to get the services. It just gives us a 100%. So I would, I would caution us in looking at that, yes, I would like judicial to give us the number of people they're serving. And yes, I would like to know what are the the maybe, it's hard to do recidivism because it's it's a it's a it's a moving target. But if we look at what we think the projected impacts are for for the people so that they don't continue that path that costs us problems in the communities, housing, increased police, et cetera, et cetera. I can give you a whole litany of it. It's much better for our community and our state where we bring them back and have them become positive in our community. Just saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Walker. That's why you're the Chair of Appropriations.
Representative Candelario, should I go to the next?
Yes.
Okay, so it was a question posed by Senator Austin about our capital projects, and I'm going to turn that over to Brian.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Just real quickly, I know we're we're short for time. We included our master project list at any given time. We've got well over 100 major projects in our state-owned facilities, which number about 38. It's courthouses and administrative buildings that are that are owned. Specific to Senator Austin's question about New London projects, you could find those at the, there's, there's three pages of projects at the bottom of page two, the top of page three. And they they certainly range from elevators, HVAC systems, fire sprinkler systems, parking, drainage, roofs and and so forth. And so I hope that's responsive to the Senator's question from last month.
Okay.
And then, Brian, would you mind taking the last, the next one? Representative Walker was asking about how much of our budget is at risk because of the federal funding threat?
Sure, sure. Thanks, Judge Bezuto. So we've also provided a two-page listing of all of our federal, our our federal grants. We've we've put them into some different categories. You'll see at the top of the page, no risk. These are closed awards that have closed in recent years, followed by low-risk awards that are soon to be closing, meaning we will have fully expended our our federal grant monies in those areas. And then we have two categories that 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 total, you know, over $90 million of, you know, a combination of ARPA dollars and then and then other awards that we have. The largest among them is is for our Office of Victim Services. And and the work that that office does is primarily funded through federal grants. You know, I think as this issue became apparent in in January with the new administration in Washington, we've kept a close eye. Obviously, we've been tracking this. We haven't had any interruptions to speak of to date. But we are in close communications. Our grants office does a great job, worked with OPM, contacts there with our federal partners and also with the Attorney General's Office, making sure that we're relaying any concerns that we have.
So as of now, do you, you're keeping communication with the federal government, but and you have not heard of any impacts currently at this time?
That's correct.
That's correct. Now, based on on what you're hearing, are there any, any of these are in jeopardy? Or maybe all of them? Who knows, right?
Yeah, I I think that's, you know, I.
You haven't got no indication.
We have not. You know, I will say, I will say, you know, one area that this committee has certainly heard us talk about in the past has been the Office of has been victim services. And that's the federal grant formula that comes down to the states. That's been significantly reduced over recent years. This committee, we're very thankful was, you know, appropriated ARPA dollars to cover the gap over the last three years. Those ARPA dollars are coming, you know, are coming to an end. And so, you know, we are facing significant shortfalls, though we don't know what our appropriation will be in that account in the coming years. Based on trends, it it's been significantly lower. So that will have a significant impact on our ability to diddle over services to the victims of crime in Connecticut through our Office of Victim Services.
Okay, thank you. And last, I think last, but I used attachment is judicial compensations?
Yeah, I I I thank you, Representative Candelario. I won't, I won't take much of your time. I know we're actually out of time. But every four years, the Judicial Compensation Commission has convened. And they issued their report. It's in that cycle. They just issued their four-year report, which we have provided a link to. And we've also attached some compelling data. It's not our data. This is all objective data out of the National Center for State Courts that ranks the Superior Court Judge's salary in the state of Connecticut at fifth, at 40, out of, I think, 51 or 52 states. And also you could see, which the commission found very compelling, that the Superior Court Judge, their salary is far less than public defenders, state attorneys, deputy chief public defenders, deputy state attorneys and the state's attorneys around around the state. So that's just provided for your your review and consideration with a link to the compensation report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Any other questions from the members? Representative Delaney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it's a, it's good to see you, Judge. I just wanted to tell you how much, first, how much I appreciate the work that you and and Chief Mullins have been doing. And it's just, it's a pleasure to have you here. And my question is around judicial compensation. So we had a recent tour from some of my colleagues and I down to the Stanford courthouse and and learned a little bit more about, you know, our 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 coverage of the Stanford Norwalk area. And what my colleagues and I saw and heard when we put our ears to the ground was that a lot of the judges were saying that some of the biggest barriers for them had been compensation for their clerking staff, for the folks that helped keep the, you know, keep, give them the beans, boots and bullets. They need to do the job. Could you expand? Have you heard a similar request and the numbers for judicial compensation? Have you guys offered any recommendations?
So the with respect to the first question regarding salaries and compensation for our staff, that's that's under Cback, and that's currently in the process of negotiation for a new contract. That negotiation is ongoing. We haven't heard where that that has been settled, but you know, probably 92, 93% of our staff is unionized and have representation with respect to those negotiations. And then, of course, our non-union employees, our exclude employees, they are linked to whatever Cback, whatever C Cback gets. And in the second part of your question, I'm sorry, Attorney Delaney. I'm sorry, Representative Delaney. I'm sorry, you have attorneys around me.
I wanted to ask you, you had referenced in your testimony an increase in judicial compensation. Did you give any hard numbers?
You know, we haven't really even started that yet because the way the statute's written, the governor is supposed to take what the commission recommends and present that to you. That that was not done. The statute was not complied with. So, you know, we hope to engage in those conversations. And actually, to be honest with you, what the Chief Justice proposed when he appeared before the Judicial Compensation Commission was just to get us to the middle of where all other trial court judges are around the country. Just get it to 26. And of course, for Connecticut, that wouldn't put us near the chief public defender. That wouldn't put us near the chief state's attorney. We would still be below them. But at least at a margin where all other trial court judges are in in the country. So he he, that was his request, put us at 26. So so that that's out there. But other than that, we're, you know, anxious to engage in conversations. That's why we've asked that you, the Appropriation Committee, please consider the compensation commission's recommendations. They only do it once every four years. They were quite surprised that a sitting Superior Court Judge makes less than the prosecutors and public defenders who appear before them. And I think that was a large basis for the recommendation.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, and and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to ask a question. I, not to, not to take any liberties with anyone's time, but I I'm blessed to represent Stanford and, you know, as not to beat a dead horse on something, I know you're obviously tracking. That's been a big issue for folks having to take that journey out to here to cover Stanford and Norwalk.
Can Judge Bezuto, just one last quick question, in regards to the compensation, in order to bring close to par with the others, have you got, do you have a number for us?
So the increase would be, and to be honest with you, Representative Candelario, this is somewhat dated because when the Compensation Commission submitted their report and the Chief Justice submitted his testimony, we were actually ranked, I think, 37th. And just to get to about 26 would be a 10% increase or $5 million. Since January 1, we are now have dropped down to 40th place in the country because many judges around the country get increases January 1 as well as July. And, you know, if if I and I, please, I sit here appreciating very much not only the tough job that you have, but the very unusual and uncertain fiscal climate that we're all operating in. But, you know, it's the the request was really just that we get somewhere in the in the middle of what other trial court judges judges receive. And that number was, would be a 10% increase and it would be $5 million.
Okay, that helps. Thank you. Any other questions from members of the committee? Uh, the end. None. Judge Bezuto, have we, do you have anything else for us that we need to talk about, any other requests?
Representative Candelario, I appreciate your time, all the questions and the opportunity you've had for us to come and talk to you about our budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for your time and commitment. We'll see each other soon again. Take care.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.